Our people are coming on from NAACP. So, over here, everybody good? All right. Call to order the Kearney R1 Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for the Constitution, under God, for the vision of liberty and justice for all. Hold call please.
Darlene Bailey?
Here.
Dan Holloway?
Yeah.
Don Kern?
Here.
Dan Weekly?
Here.
Susan Mormon?
Here.
Kelly?
Here. Before I'm being present, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move that the agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Hold call please.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes.
Dan Holloway?
Yes.
Don Kern?
Yes.
Dan Weekly?
Yes.
Susan Mormon?
Sorry, yes.
Mark Kelly?
Yes. There is no public comment tonight. Next we have a consent agenda. Entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Third, second. Hold call please.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes.
Dan Holloway?
Yes.
Don Kern?
Yes.
Dan Weekly?
Yes.
Susan Mormon?
Yeah.
Mark Kelly?
Yes. Do we have information items?
So with regard to financial reports, we, these financial reports are based upon information that was submitted. We got, we did receive an invitation of some withholding, but we don't know what the total amount's gonna be. Both really frankly for this financial report and for the preliminary budget. Well, we know that there's gonna be some kind of withholdings. We just don't know the extent of it at this point. We had a governor's call today that was very nonspecific, and so there's lots of speculation going on. We think maybe next week we'll have a better idea, but you know, there's, obviously the state has a pretty significant shortfall and unemployment up and, and sales tax, sales revenues down. So what I'd say is, at this point, we don't wanna make sure that we don't jump to too many conclusions or recognize that the, or shout out that the sky's falling when it's not really. We've got some backup funds in this district and the balances that the board is very adamant to maintain is, is, is one of those. So Ginger, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Correct me if I'm wrong, at last projection, even with the withholding that we know about, the fiscal fund balances for 2020 is relatively accurate?
Yes.
Right now it's shown at 21%. So as of, as of today, 20, 21%, but if we have greater withholdings for this fiscal year, it may go down. And then again, in a week or two, we're gonna know, have a better idea what that looks like going forward. So it's a wait and see game. Everybody's in the same boat frankly, and we'll see what happens. With regard to the Real World Learning update, thanks to the good work of our Real World Learning design team, we submitted a, a rather significant document to the Kaufman Foundation. And then next Wednesday, the 27th, at 2:00 PM is the, is the Kearney Real World Learning Design Pitch. All of the 15 school districts will be pitching their plan for, for their Real World Learning Initiative with the end goal of having every kid graduate with at least one market value asset. They'll be doing that Wednesday and Thursday. So Board of Education will have an opportunity to listen live, and, and our pitch is on Wednesday at 2:00 PM. We have a, a number of participants in that pitch. Susan Mormon is a, is a board member, but she's also on the design team. Her job will be to articulate that the board is, is behind this initiative and feels, and feel that it's, it's really important. My role is to kinda initiate and welcome and, and talk a little bit about the, the board goals and, and strategic plan oriented around that. Dr. Miller will be on. He'll be, he'll be winding things up and really just stating the commitment to those folks at Kaufman and communicating that, that we're, there's a smooth leadership transition and, and Kearney School District will be as committed as ever to Real World Learning. And then we have some other folks from our team that are going to participate in the presentation, including some of our community people, like Shauna Circe from the Economic Development Council. So I think it'll be, I think it'll be a good presentation. We'll follow that up with, with the grant, actual grant application for funding. So, but it's, I mean, the, the design team's done some tremendous amount of work. Folks at the high school have done, already have done some great things and getting us closer to that goal of, of market value assets for every kid. And going forward, there'll be a nice commitment from this district and whatever school looks like next year, Real World Learning will be a part of it. Questions about that?
Next is the reentry task force. Mr. Morrison, Dr. Nicely have been working on putting together.
Do you want to give a brief update on?
Currently, we have 12 staff members that are on our task force, ranging from different departments, from instruction, custodial maintenance, nurse and health services. So we're looking at, kind of developing right now some protocols and checklist as we look through scenarios that could, we could face in the fall. And everything's kinda unknown, but we're kinda started with guidance from what Clay County has given us as step progressions and looking at that. And so this task force will continue to grow as we add more people into it. And then the goal is then to have an ad hoc committee that we're kinda setting up with Dr. Nicely in early June to get a feel from our community and how, what they have to tell us as well. So we can, we will continue at these weekly meetings. In addition, I have with the Northland Task Force, we're talking with all Northland schools has tried to be as consistent as possible. If we have multiple districts coming across the same things and helping each other out in, during these kind of unknown times. So that's, we're trying to get a lot of voices and to make the best decisions we can for our kids and our parents.
With regard to the task force, we tentatively set a date of June 2nd at 6:30 PM, and that'll be a virtual event. And what we wanna do is we wanna get members of our community, stakeholders, parents, perhaps they've got a background in health, the healthcare field, so they have some expertise like our board member, Dan Holloway here. And certainly all of our board members are welcome to participate as well. What we wanna do is, the purpose of that is if you think back to the Safety and Security Task Force that we put together a couple of years ago when they, when we were concerned about physical threats of school violence, because we'd seen that in the country. Those folks that, from law enforcement officials from a variety of areas were extremely helpful in helping the district determine a, a plan. But in addition to that, they were really good communicators and liaisons for the districts that we were working hard to do the right thing, and we hope that that'll be the case this time as well. And so in conjunction with those two committees, we're also gonna be momentarily sending out surveys to our own staff to get their perceptions. Certainly they're incredibly important and want them to feel safe coming back to school. So we need to know what their thoughts and concerns are. And then we'll be also surveying our, our parents about their thoughts and concerns and recognizing that, that the results of those surveys will change over time. Every week, this thing evolves and, and ultimately we wanna get to about mid-July and be able to say, here's the Kearney School District plan, plan. And, and frankly, that's gonna happen during the transition of leadership as well. So that data that we're getting from our constituencies is incredibly important. And of course, we'll keep the board posted on how things are going all along the way. Questions about that? I think they're frozen up there.
Dave Onrhein?
Pardon?
Dave? To talk about activities?
Yeah. Is there audio?
There's audio. It looks like you guys are froze.
It is resetting right now for the.
If we can, let's go ahead and hear from Dave.
Okay, Dave, are you?
He got, he got kicked off.
Yeah, you guys froze up.
Studying. Can't tell about the.
No, I can't.
I can.
Was, we had him in a waiting room, so.
We've lost video.
We have you on audio.
Yeah, they were saying, that's what they said.
We're trying to, we're resetting the video part, portion of it. But we have to, and we have to have that to make it a valid meeting. If we're having votes, I'm sorry. But we're now trying to get Dave Sworzenbach on with us. And as he's on, we, he can provide information.
Ryan?
We're moving.
Hello, believe.
Hello, believe.
Can you tell about Dave? Dave Sworzenbach?
He, I, he said, he said his office, well, he could call us. Wanted to call with questions.
He can call in. Can he not log on?
I mean, I'm not either. I'm not on.
So it's a district-wide issue? Can he call in? You have the call-in number? No?
Call in my, Dave, can you call my, if he can hear us, I believe. Can you call my work extension number?
Can you call my phone?
I can talk about it too.
Hey, Mark, are you guys going to put your video back up?
That's what we're working on. It is, it appears that all of the internet is down.
Dave?
Right now. So.
Ryan's gonna have it.
Ryan thinks we are close.
Hang on.
You were there.
You're on here with Dave? Is it saying we're there?
I can see you.
I see ya.
All right, we can't see you right now. Coming quickly. Okay, so does Dave want to?
Okay, Dave, I'm gonna hang up. See him again.
There he is.
Tell Dave he's gotta unmute himself. How are we doing?
Hi, Dave.
Well, how are you tonight?
Good. I heard a little bit, but I didn't hear any, any questions or anything, so how can I help you?
Dave, will you tell us a little bit about the summer activities planned beginning in June with camps?
Yeah, so right now, what we're looking at, the suburban conference came out a little bit late and provided some guidelines that we really weren't aware of, so we've been looking into those. Our original plan was to start June 4th and follow Clay County. That, then the suburban conference came out and said, we'd like you to follow June 15th. So we're in a little bit of a limbo trying to find out exactly, does that include just summer conditioning, or does that include summer camps, football, et cetera? So right now, our rollout plan regardless, whenever we work out that date, whether it's the 4th or the 15th, we're gonna start with a week of just outdoor conditioning, work on rotating our groups, keeping the Clay County guidelines in effect. We sent our plans to Clay County Health. They came back with several suggestions about cleaning restrooms and things like that, but other than that, they said our plan was acceptable and go ahead and move forward. Now it's just an idea of working out the date. Regardless, if we start on the 15th, we'll go for a week of conditioning, then we'll move on to opening up summer camps. And basically, I've been in top contact with my coaches. We'll just have to move our camps back till probably starting on that, following the 15th of that week after conditioning starts.
Dave, tell us a little bit about the plan.
Okay, basically the plan, and hopefully, I don't know if it was shared with you or not, basically we start in three groups with the outdoor workouts, no equipment. They're gonna use the junior high football field, the turf field, and the high school practice field, keeping the coaches and athletes under 50. Once they get to that location, they'll break that group down into three groups and keep it at 10 or, you know, 10 or less is the idea. It could get up to 12. It really just depends. And then once they're in their groups, they're gonna stay in those groups until they rotate. The sessions last about an hour and a half, and so they'll rotate the fields. Now, what we're working on right now is, can we rotate coaches and keep the players there and that kinda deal? We're also gonna work on having them drop off at certain locations. They'll stay in the tennis court parking lot, the greenhouse parking lot, and then of course, the high school parking lot. The first week is gonna be easier to coordinate. It gets tricky when you start adding the summer camps and making sure that we're not crossing groups and getting our numbers above 50 per gym.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, what age range are you gonna use, are you gonna go with for the camps? Right now, we're, well, right now, we're starting with the conditioning part, which isn't your question, is eighth grade and above. The camps right now, we had planned on sixth grade. We're a little bit nervous about younger and social distancing. Clay County did come out and say they're gonna come out with some guidance as far as allowing youth sports to start in June. That's not official, but they said they were looking at that.
And Dave, what about opening up our outdoor facilities to the public for use like the tennis courts, track, et cetera?
Actually, on the way to, on the way here, I did see some students playing tennis in the tennis court parking lot. So obviously, earlier would be great. We're gonna stay with June 4th so we don't break any guidelines, because it's very hard to monitor 10 people and under. So I'd like to start June 4th, as soon as we can, open up the track for people to, you know, run on, assuming it's ready to go. It's getting repainted right now, and the tennis courts and so forth.
Appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
So, no, I, I was just curious, when things do start, Dave, football, you know, just looking at a regular season, obviously this isn't a regular season, like dead week and all that stuff, will that be somehow incorporated or not? Because I know some parents talk to me, like, ask about vacations, all this other stuff. I don't think they're really looking at the big vacation like they normally do, but I was just curious how that looks.
So we, this, Misha came out and said, if you're talking about dead weeks and vacations, they came out and said that July dead week is optional. Talking to our coaches, we went ahead and decided we're gonna keep both our dead weeks as is, so our parents and families can plan their vacations or trips or whatever those look like. NFHS came out with some guidelines. They're a little quirky. For example, they have it to where if you pass a basketball, you're not allowed to pass a basketball to another person during their camps, things like that. So Misha has not picked that up yet. I'm hoping as things, and hopefully things get better and we don't have an outbreak, we'll see those restrictions kinda go away and some guidance from Misha as far as what fall sports are gonna look like.
All right, thank you.
Everybody can dribble on the floor, but you can't pass the ball to somebody else.
And that's, that's probably one of the more normal ones. They, they get extremely interesting as you go further.
So, so basketball will be all about traveling?
Yes, absolutely.
Hey, Dave.
What about communications for this, particularly for any families that are nervous about, you know, reentry and all that kinda thing? When are communications going out and how will that be handled so that people feel safe with their, are comfortable with their decisions?
Right. I, as, I was waiting to talk to you guys tonight and just see if you had any questions and make sure we were on the right track. The plan is, as soon as, on Monday, well, not Monday, but Tuesday, we're having a Zoom meeting with coaches. At that time, I'll have a schedule of what's gonna come out, and then they can start blasting that out. I know a couple of them, for example, tennis, she went ahead and sent it out, and it was a little bit early, but on the flip side is, no one's gonna be using her courts except her, so we know those dates are kinda locked as far as that plan. It gets more interesting with the turf field and soccer and football and things. So we're gonna get that together and then use, not use Sonia, but require her services to help us blast that out and let the parents know what's going on. Also, one of the schools, and we'll probably pick it up, they're having the parents sign a permission slip saying that it is okay for their athlete to participate and what our guidelines are gonna be, so they know what, exactly what we're doing and that comfort level. And then if we, and I assume we're gonna improve as we go, so as we get better suggestions on how to do things, we'll adjust.
I think the only thing that I've heard was, you know, people making decisions and concerned if they choose not to participate in conditioning, what's the impact to their child in participating in that sport in the school year?
Right. No, we came, basically right now, and that was a topic of conversation that came up with our coaches, and we know that it's extremely voluntary. In fact, we're even gonna offer to those students that don't feel comfortable coming up, those athletes, they're gonna offer workouts off campus for them, and then, and they can follow up that way. So yeah, we don't wanna rush anybody. We wanna make sure everybody's comfortable, and we know that there's gonna be some athletes that choose to do that at home, and that's fine. And most of the tryouts don't start until after that August dead week, on August 10th, and then hopefully we'll, we'll have a better idea of what's going on at that point.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Next is the Clay County Children's Fund Grant. Jennifer, you wanna talk about the Children's Fund? Yeah, you're on the, Jennifer.
Hey, um, yeah, today we found, hello? For the last couple months, Megan Masters, one of our. What? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes.
For the most part.
Yeah.
Okay, well, for the last couple of months, Megan Masters and I, one of our social workers, we've been working on the Clay County Children's Fund Grant, and today we actually found out that we were approved for the full amount. We have lots of things written into this grant, so we're super excited about it. Lots of mental health services, the Panorama Education Program that we presented to you guys a couple of months ago, that will be a part of it. It's got a student success platform as well as a social emotional learning assessment for kids. It will also allow us to have a behavior interventionist. It will be an outside provider that will be bringing her into the school. We've already started using her, but we will be able to use her services even more because we have more money now. We'll be able to increase our small group therapy, our individual therapy, so lots of, lots of things. We also put a component in to support our diversity, equity, and inclusion programs. So lots of things going on with it. So total, it's 1,206,800. So split between the two years, we have a little over 601,000 for this, the 2021 school year, and then a little over 605,000 for the 2122.
Congratulations. Thanks for all your hard work getting that.
Thank you.
Those around our office know that both Jennifer Cope and Megan Masters have spent a ridiculous amount of time putting together this proposal and, and really have done obviously a great job not only to have procured this grant, but if we think about the value it's gonna bring to kids in our school district, increasing their mental health capacity, it's, this is the, there's no more urgent a time to, to do that than right now. So well done, Jennifer. Congratulations to Megan as well.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next is the action items. NAACP agreement? We have our, our people coming on? There's Bill Whitcomb. Whitcomb, you have, you're on mute.
And there's Rita.
Hi, Rita.
Hi.
Bill is here now. Hi, Bill.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, great job.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to thank you both for, and there's Reverend Williams. Hello, Reverend Williams.
How are you doing? Good to see you.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, three of you, for, for joining in our meeting. We have been keeping the Board of Education apprised of our progress and our conversations with the NAACP and Rita with OCR, and the good work that you've been doing, the School Spirit Program with our, with our students, and, and all of the activities and conversations we've had that have led up to this agreement. we've had that have led up to this agreement. Bill, what I told the Board of Education previously is that I, at our last meeting, one of the things that, in the NAACP office, one of the things that I said to, to you, and I think to Reverend Williams, is that, you know, it's okay that we can come up with a plan of action, but, but it was my intent that Carney School District be a model school district, and not only just our school district, our community, for progressive change in this area, and, and to develop a plan and work forward with it, with the, with the Community Resources Divisions, Rita's assistance, and the assistance of the Kansas City Chapter of the NAACP, I think we're doing that. I think this agreement here is, is a milestone step, but it's not the end. And Dr. Matt Miller, who is the incoming superintendent, is on this Zoom meeting, and our board members, and I think Rita, you know that after having conversations with Carney Mayor, Mr. Randy Poe, he and the city are committed to progressive change as well. And so while this is a milestone, it's just hopefully one of many. And so we are, we're pleased and honored to enter into this agreement. Some of you may not know, but Bill and I had a meeting several weeks ago with Dr. Kenny Southwick of the Cooperative School Districts of Greater Kansas City, and under that umbrella of idea of being a model school district, we're also working with Cooperative School Districts of Greater Kansas City to create a relationship with Kansas City Chapter of the NAACP, and have them act as a resource not only to our school district, but the school districts all across the Kansas City area. So we hope that that will come to fruition as well. Mr. Kelly, do you have anything to say? No, I'm just proud of our district for participating in this, looking forward to an ongoing relationship with the NAACP, progressing accordingly. Appreciate all of your, your help with this agreement. Any comments on your end?
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes, I have a comment, and that is, I would just like to thank you for the transparency that you showed from the beginning to the ending of this process, and I believe the disagreement is going to be beneficial to your community and the surrounding communities at large. And I just thank you for all of the hard work that you've done. Great job.
Reverend Williams, echo my sentiments exactly. I feel the same way.
Good.
Thank, thank you Rita for all your help.
Oh, thank you. It was, it was a pleasure working with you. You know, when we usually come into these things, it's not a nice situation. It's not anything you look forward to coming in because something has happened that's upset people in the community. However, working with the Carney School District has been a very, very good experience for me personally, and I think for the people who were involved. I think it showed the commitment and the dedication to making the community better, and to enhancing what's already going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I would agree with that, and I just want to recognize that it certainly is not just the commitment of the Board of Education or the superintendent, it's the commitment of all of our staff, and frankly, our students. And Jennifer Cope has been working hard on this, and, and we really have some, a dedicated group of staff members who have been working closely with students, and, and we've seen some, we've seen some miraculous things, and I think we're going to continue to see those.
I was really impressed with the students that I met and worked with, and the student leaders, and the administration that was there, the principals, and, and Jennifer, and, and other members of your staff were also really, 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 really helpful and, and very, very good to work with. Thank you. And thank you for your leadership.
So I believe now Mr. Kelly is going to sign the agreement. We have entertain a motion first.
Before you do that, I just wanted to say one thing. I wanted to tell the NAACP, obviously, thank you for extending your hand and working with us as well. I mean, this is a two-way street. This is, this is not just an agreement, but a friendship. And I just wanted to let you guys know that we're appreciative as well, that you guys would be willing to work with us. So just wanted to let you guys know that as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you Rita, Rodney, Bill. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Rita because I don't think, she push, she's a pusher, and needs to be commended for that. Thank you, Rita.
Thank you, Bill. And, and you had, there were a lot of community volunteers who were facilitators and who were there and, for the training the day before and the day of the event, and, and they were wonderful. And I'm recognizing some of their names as I'm looking at your names. But for me, it's hard, I can't even remember my own children's names sometimes. So I just, I just want to say that the volunteers that were there were fantastic. They really gave of their time and energy, and, and it made the, the spirit program be a great, a great day for everyone there. Thank you.
Entertained a motion.
I move to approve the memorandum of agreement with the NAACP as presented.
Roll call, please.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes.
Dan Holloway?
Yes.
Don Kern?
Yes.
Dan Weekly?
Yes.
Susan Warman?
A great big yes.
Kelly?
Yes. A pride. I signed this agreement with the NAACP and the Carney School District. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Take care.
Thank you. Thank you.
I hope we can get together soon for some more barbecue.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Rita, what's next?
That's great. That's great. Next, we have our proposed, and our preliminary budget for the 2020-2021 school year. And as, it is in this caption, you know, this is a preliminary budget. This is all certainly in degree of flux, if you want to say that. We're all trying to project out with an enormous, that's a gross understatement, an enormous amount of unknowns, both from a funding standpoint as well as what our, our teaching is going to be. What are, whatever is our education going to be? How are we going to teach our students? So hopefully, everybody is mindful of that as they have seen and reviewed the preliminary budget. Now, there, there is some, obviously, some belt tightening. Unfortunately, staff salaries are the number one. Recognizing that salaries are 75% of our budget, that's the essential part. Biggest thing you're going to see is that we are doing step increases for all certified staff and non-certified staff have a comparable increase in their salary. A small percentage, but hopefully everyone recognizes that this is because of the unknown. You don't know what, what the budget's going to be and what we're going to need. And so that's a start, and this is all in flux beyond that. With that in mind, are there any specific questions or general questions, comments? Anyone with, has in relation to that for Dr. Nicely? I think Ginger's on as well.
Yes.
So I do have a question. The reduction of supplies by 53%, is that anticipate, I mean, what, why, why did we go that direction with supplies for the new fiscal year when we had been trending the other direction? And I understand COVID has a large part, but where's that coming from? And what, and what does that entail?
It's a goal at the moment. We're reviewing all categories. You'll see a better budget detail come June.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that, what Ginger said is, is there's, there's, there's probably more, there absolutely is without question, there are more unknowns this year than we've seen in a long time, or maybe ever. And all school districts are in the same boat. Here's what we do know. We do know that, that, that by the time a month rolls around and we have a, our, our June board meeting, we're going to have a better idea of what that, what that budget's going to look like. We're going to have a better idea of state withholdings, but we're not going to have a perfect idea. So unfortunately, Dr. Miller is going to inherit a district, end a budget that will be in a continuous state of flux, which is, is identical to 523 other school districts in this state and across the country, frankly, with regard to how the pandemic has impacted the economy, but not just that. It's also a function of how many of our staff feel comfortable coming back to school and teaching, and how many of our parents feel comfortable sending their kids back and teaching. And so I'll go back to the idea behind the reentry task force and the ad hoc committee is for, for us as a school district to get a grasp on how we as a school district are managing the ebb and flow of students, but also our own staff. And both of those equate to what the budget looks like. If, for example, the one estimate across the country is that there'll be a significant reduction of student population inside the public school setting. Some may choose to educate at home in a homeschool setting, some may choose to educate at home virtually utilizing school services. We're exploring all of those options. And, but, we know for sure that depending on how many parents, percentage of parents choose each of those options, will be a direct determinant to what our staffing needs are, which then in turn will be a direct determinant of what our budget requirements are. And so we're going to give you our best estimate, prediction, whatever you want to call it, at the end of June. But, but it, the fact of the matter is, is that we really won't know until Dr. Miller probably, probably August, September, maybe October, we won't know what those, how that's all going to shake out. What I can tell you is that what I feel comfortable with is that we're going to end this year with somewhere around 20% balances, somewhere around 20% balances. Balances are a function of, it's a percentage of your overall expenditures, and ours constitutes about $40 million. So 20% balances is good money in the bank, which we have, which the Board of Education has said is really important in case something unpredictable happens. Well, guess what? Here we are. We are at that unpredictable place. And that, those balances will, will mitigate the district from taking invasive actions, as Mr. Kelly said, around staffing, because 75, 80% of our, our budget is, is all about staff. It takes people to educate kids. We know that to be the case. And that buffer balance will keep us from having to dramatically or drastically, if you will, make changes to staffing. And I, and I find comfort in that. As an individual who's going to be handing over the district to new leadership, I find comfort in that, to know that, that we have an insurance policy in hand. Not everybody can say that. All of that is to say, it doesn't mean that we are not going to have to take some actions going forward. And what Ginger alluded to was, we're, we're going to hold off on, we're going to go ahead and budget some of those expenses on supplies, but, and some we're not. But in addition to that, we're going to hold off on, we're going to put a, a sort of a roadblock in front of any expenditures of those items until we get into the school district and, and Ginger and Dr. Miller determine that, okay, now there's some, a little bit of stability. I think we can go ahead and open up those, those budget lines, and people can start purchasing some of those supplies that they need. Keep in mind that many of the supplies that, that we need to start off the school year have already been purchased and, and either received or on their way. Do we have some reserves from last year? Yes, yeah. And that's part of, part of what Ginger has talked about with that 21% balance is that, is that we're, we've already put the brakes on spending through the end of this year, and, and so there'll be a little bit extra left over that we anticipated spending that won't get spent. That's really what we're going to know, Ginger, by the end of this month. We're going to know what that amount of dollars is. We're going to know what, what proxy funding we get in, or, as Ginger said to me earlier today, we got a little bit of, of local dollars from Clay County in, what was the category, Ginger? Was it?
It's property taxes, delinquent taxes.
Delinquent taxes. We got some of that in that we weren't expecting. So, you know, there's still a couple of pieces that are coming in, but, but by the end of June, we'll know what, how we ended up. We'll know, we'll know what restrictions we receive from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and be able to balance those two together along with, with, with what we've spent. We have, we have still budgeted in $400,000 transfer to Fund IV. We absolutely have the liberty not to transfer those dollars to Fund IV, and that's another little bit of insurance. Recall that typically what we do at the end of the year is we think that $400,000 is budgeted, and we transfer that to Fund IV for capital projects. But in addition to that, we transfer another $600,000 to $800,000 if we have that. Well, we absolutely won't be doing that this time. And we have some balances in Fund IV that will allow us to continue to maintain facilities, which is incredibly important, and, and indefinitely into the future to keep this district running. As Dr. Nicely said, I mean, the fact that this budget is protected, projected to be a deficit spending, that's why we have maintained 25% balance. This is a generational pandemic that we had difficulty in anticipating, but we did ensure for that. And so when we, when we have deficit spending, we have to be mindful of our responsibility toward our students. We are still being fiscally responsible as we do that. And we're going to continue to monitor. There's no doubt about that. With that in mind, does anybody have any other questions?
No, I, I would just like to thank Ginger for all her hard work and reworking so many numbers and doing everything she's been working on so hard. So, thank you, Ginger.
Thank you.
God, entertain a motion to approve the budget preliminary.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2020-2021 preliminary budget as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes.
Dan Holloway?
Yes.
Don Kern?
Yes.
Dan Weekly?
Yes.
Susan Warman?
Yes.
Mark Kelly?
Yes. Thank you. Salary schedules, we've already touched on. Jeff, do you want to talk about it generally?
Yeah, have included all our salary schedules. You can see that in most categories, we're not changing salary schedules, only just asking the board for step movement for them. If you'll notice, one of our goals in the classified salary schedule, to get our kids club and also our daycare above that $12 minimum wage by 2023, we do need to make a movement of taking the steps ahead. So in other words, we took step two and made that step one now so that we can So in other words, we took step two and made that step one now, so that we can get ahead of that and compete with other industries and to keep good people there. So, and we also did for minimum wage, if we do hire a paint crew, right now, our custodians are doing a lot of that painting crew. But if we would have to hire a few kids, we want to have that for the minimum wage on the miscellaneous pay scale.
How we can do salary in relation to that for next year?
Coaches and conversations we're having with the other Northland.
Yeah. Yes, on extra duty, so obviously with what's going on right now, we already had people slated and scheduled, and we didn't have spring activities, but they did some other duties for us. As we move forward into next year, we're studying what extra duties look like, talking a lot with our Highway 92 and Northland school districts, if something were not to occur for that. And it may be that we may delay payments, or we may look at lump sum payments if we get through a sporting season or activity season. So we're studying that. And in addition, Dave has talked with his head coaches council to keep them abreast on this as we're looking at it. And I think their big concern that they talked to Dave about was that they knew that they weren't going to have to pay anything back this year, which the board committed to paying them. They understood if there's adjustments that need to be made if a season would not happen. One of the pieces that we did talk about, and Dave mentioned and got input from head coaches, head coaches and head sponsors, a lot of times, their year doesn't shut down even though the season is done. And so they do a lot of preliminary work afterwards, and that may be, have some merit in there that they have earned some of their stipend already because of some of the off-season things that they do, or some of the things that they're prepping for their activity or their sport. Assistance, they understand that if a season didn't happen, or maybe we could back up that payment on extra duties. A lot of districts are talking, and that's another nice thing about our Northland, is we're trying to be consistent amongst districts so that nobody feels like they're slighted by any means. But again, we're still in the discussion phase with that.
We've got a little bit of time.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions in relation to that? Not entertain a motion?
I move to approve the changes in salary schedules as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes.
Dan Holloway?
Yes.
Don Kern?
Yes.
Lee? Dan Weekly?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Susan Warman?
Yes.
Mark Kelly?
Yes. Next is board member comments?
I have one.
Go ahead.
I think, I want to thank Steve McDonald for putting the balance issue into our heads so much that we're in a great place right now.
Thank you, Steve.
And he's not even here to hear that.
Somebody's got to tell him that I brought his name up about fund balance and about how.
How dare you bring up his name after I did it before and you mocked.
I do, I want to congratulate our seniors. I mean, what a tough year to go through. I also want to thank all of our staff, teachers, administration, that have helped us educate through this pandemic. I can't imagine.
I agree with Mark's sentiments. Mark, I agree with your sentiments exactly. Of course, me, you, Dan, anybody else who's out there just watching the parade and the seniors drive by and the kids, happy, at least they were happy, you know, that sort of thing. And it's just healthy and happy, I guess I should say. So we got to be blessed that way, and bless all the teachers reaching out, and even if it's through Zoom or going that extra mile, or those kids with special needs who needed things. I've heard all kinds of great stories, even though I'm living where I live at work sometimes, but just great things. And I also, I want to take the time, and not to go on, guys, but to thank Mark, thank Bill, thank everybody for here, for being a part of a legacy as Mark signed that agreement tonight. That's just a piece of history for the Carney School District. It's incredible. Just thank you.
I'll just chime in, and I sent Bill an email last week, but you guys know I'm running around town all the time. And it is so gratifying when I'm out around 11 o'clock every day and see the caravan of buses that actually create a traffic jam as they are heading towards the school to pick up the food for all of our kids. And I just think that that's been a wonderful thing that we've been able to do, not only for a group of kids we were serving, but for the entire community. And I know that we got some national publicity for that, which was awesome, but it just is a tremendous thing, and I'm glad that we're going to be able to continue some of those things for the summer for those kids.
I do, it's kind of self-serving, but I want to really thank Andy Guff's and the high school staff for their communication about all the things with the seniors and just, it's been a very difficult thing to stay on top of, and I really appreciate Andy's communication. He's been on top of everything and has really tried hard to overcommunicate about all the things that are going on. So I really appreciate, I texted him the other day about after the parade. I thought the parade was great. My kids loved it. His kids loved it, and we said a great time. I really appreciated their time and their effort with that and all the communication and unusual circumstances that they've had to work through. I really appreciate it. So, and I texted him that, but I just wanted to let other board members know, and of course, you, Dr. Nysel, and Jeff, and Dr. Miller, that we really, really appreciate all that Andy and his group has done during this really unprecedented times.
And Dan, I would second too with that, with the community, with the police and the fire department that came out, because I think a lot of the families and kids were like, we didn't think the fire department, you know, and the police department. So they were just, wow, you know, when the fire truck and the lights rolled through, and some of the little kids around, it was pretty cool to see them get excited about the whole thing and know that it was fully supported community-wise. So it just, yeah.
I want to change gears, and I wanted to talk about something to go with the NAACP agreement, in that with COVID, there can be racism towards Asian-Americans. And I've heard of it around Carney, and I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that that's something that, you know, we've got kids that are in our schools that are Asian-American and with diversity, I think that we need to, we have an opportunity here with this COVID to make sure that we teach not just African-American diversity, but all diversity within our schools. And that it's really easy in today's world and today's culture that you see if you watch the TV, to see some things that are said that are inappropriate. And as a board member, you know, it's our job to step up and make sure that everybody hears that. And so just, you know, I wanted you guys to all be aware that maybe, you know, with the diversity, with the Spirit Program, that that would be another thing that we could be out in front on to stand up against. So didn't mean to change the subject, but something of a passion of mine that I've seen over the last couple of weeks.
No, it's true, John. I'll just comment a little bit. I took a picture of a coworker nurse who's Asian, and she's not Chinese, but sure enough, I took a picture of her with a mask, and we were receiving a gift from Ford for masks. And some people thought, oh, that's nice that China who brought this is representing, you know, and that was kind of a comment I ended up getting from a picture. And so I definitely understand where you're coming from with that. So, and I have friends that have adopted here locally, kids from China too, and so I understand how that felt.
Good. Thank you all. Thank you all, all your comments. Next, important dates. Election date, June 2nd, June 10th, our first board meeting of the month of June. June 24th, our second board meeting. June 18th, hopefully we have prom. June 15th, or I said June, July 18th, prom. July 15th is our July board meeting, and all, as well projected as our board workshop. So if everyone would put that on their calendar, make sure that they are available. We'll probably start around 5:00 that evening. Is that correct, Dr. Miller? He's giving us a strong nod of his head.
Yes.
July 25th and 26th, graduation, hopefully, likely on our football field. I'm saying that so as pressure, Dan Weekly thinks that I have worked really hard to accomplish this over the years.
I'd agree with that.
I want to do it just for you, Mark.
All right. Entertain a motion regarding sunshine law.
Action for a closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in June, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under section 610.021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes.
Dan Holloway?
Yes.
Don Kern?
Yes.
Weekly?
Yes.
Warman?
Yes.
Mark Kelly?
Yes. Thank you all. Appreciate your attendance. Meeting is adjourned.